Hi everyone, this is Hillary Hoag. And I'm outside of the town hall debate. And just giving you a little FYI that Kathleen Pasadomo, the guardianship queen, that when you look in the dictionary, under guardianship reform, you'll see her smiling, has declined appearing here today. So she will not be here to tell her constituents what she's planning on doing if reelected, and won't answer any questions about the fraud that she's involved in. So needless to say, I'm going in. We're still gonna go with this town hall meeting because the candidate that's running against her will be here and hopefully she'll answer some of the questions that Kathleen Pasadomo refuses to answer. Again, we've tried to meet with her, a lot of the victims, a lot of her constituents, and she will not meet with us. So needless to say, it's on. We're going in now. Can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me? I'm not used to being... I don't sing like this. Okay, it's much better if I use the mic. So my assistant. How's this? Better? Where's my students? This one ready? Is that better? Alright. So it's my privilege to be your moderator tonight. My former student and just overall ultimate rock star, Tamara Paquette, called me and asked me to do this. And I just can't say no to that awesome lady. She's not here tonight, but I'm doing this for her. Just to say, I'll go over a few things. We wanted to make this night special because we didn't want to be like the other forums. We wanted to be special in the sense that we want direct answers from our candidates. We don't want political rhetoric. We don't want, you know, kind of a speech that goes on and on. We want to really provide you with an educational evening. And in doing so, we're expecting straight answers from our candidates. And so if a candidate... Oh, please shut off your cell phones. Please silence them, whatever you have to do. And I will redirect the candidates if they deviate from the question in any way. So number one, each candidate must answer those questions directly and without opinions, aspersions, etc. They'll be allotted two minutes. I do have a timekeeper, official timekeeper. So we'll stick with the two minutes. And we're really cutting it down to the exact minute with this because we want to, more importantly, have time for your questions and answers. Okay, so we have a few questions that were directed from the forum, and then we will have questions from you. Number two, we only want those... We will only use those questions from the audience that address specific topics and do not contain any negative personal opinions. Okay? We want to be positive. I'm all about cheering. I'm a football mom, proud football mom. My son's football team just won district championship up in Fort Myers. Go Raiders! So I'm all about cheering. No booing allowed. So real quickly, I'd like to start with Dr. Bader. And everyone will have the opportunity just to introduce yourself and what office you're running for.
Hello, I'm Dr. Jennifer Bader. I'm running for Florida House District 80, which is northeast Collier County, north about Gator Alley, east of Livingston, and all of Hendrick County. Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, there we go. Good evening, my name is Byron Donalds. I am running for reelection for Florida House District 80. Obviously Jennifer just mentioned that it serves northern Collier County, east of East Road, all of Hendrick County, including Alvaria, Bockley, Closete, Lobel, Pioneer, Montour, Estates, and Little Bay Estates.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Javier Esposito. And I'm running for Florida House District 105. It covers parts of West Miami-Dade, up into Miramar, parts of South Miami-Dade, and comes all the way over that lake into Naples.
Hi, thanks so much for coming out tonight. I'm Sarah McFadden. I'm a candidate for Florida House 106. It's all in Collier County, all along the coast. West of Livingston and further south is west of Collier Boulevard. It includes Marco Island, Goodland, Everlake City, and Chuckellus.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Larry Peddard. I'm running for county commissioner in District 4. District 4 covers Pine Ridge Road all the way to 41. Then it goes east towards the Rattles Lake. And I'd love to be your county commissioner.
Good evening, my name is Kenny Taylor. And I am running for reelection in District 4. District 4 runs from the Gulf of Mexico to I-75. Pine Ridge Road is the northern part of it, and it goes all the way to Davis. And then right about Airport Road, it takes a Y sweep south and it goes into Naples Bay. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Anissa Kareem. I'm running for Florida State Senate in District 28. District 28 covers all of Collier County, all of Hendrick County, and then portions of Lee County, including Lee High Acres, Alva, Charleston Park, Benita, and Eastern Estero. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Pete Pollard. I'm running for Congress, District 19. But if you know that District 19 is basically Lee and Collier Counties, the Gulf section, and does not cover all of the island. I'm not quite sure where it does cut off.
Good evening, thank you all for coming out tonight. I'm David Holden. I'm a Democratic candidate for Congress in District 19. District 19, Marco, Collier, roughly the border is Livingston, but it digs in and out as the jury-mandering masters decided it should. And then it goes up into Lee County. The district is 77% of the voters are in Lee County, and it covers the bulk, but not the entirety of Lee County.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's just hope that gas prices stay down. So we're all here to preserve our democracy, so let the education begin. The first question will be addressed to candidate Pete Pollard. The question is, and this will go around, each will have two minutes again. If elected to the office you're seeking, what would your top priority be? How would you go achieving it?
My top priority would be to explain to the American people that their monetary policy is nothing like what you think it is. At the federal level... I'm sorry. It's true. At the federal level, your taxes don't pay for anything. At the federal level, taxes have a simple purpose. That's to drain money out of the economy, to control inflation, and maintain price stability. So my priority would be to explain to the people that affordability is not dependent on taxation. We don't tax to raise revenue. That was first discovered during World War II. And it was made a... Beardsley Rummel, who was the chairman of the New York Federal Reserve Bank, wrote in the New York Times in 1946 that taxation for revenue is obsolete. We simply don't have to do it. We discovered that during the trying time of World War II. When the Japanese attacked Pearl Harbor, we had to throw out the gold standard and all those nice formal thoughts on economics and revenue. And the world had been a different percentage. We could no longer run this economy on the gold standard. There isn't enough gold standard on the planet, there isn't enough gold on the planet for us to run our economy. So the first thing you need to know, if you need to get it, sorry, to get it through your heads, taxes don't pay for anything at the federal level. Every time a politician tells you, "You're running out of money," or "Where are you gonna get the taxes?" He's lying to you. To entire internal processes.
Good evening. So this is probably the most important question that any politician should be asked. And this is the first time that it's been asked of any of us, I think, in any of our forums. So I live my life by, quote, by Martin Luther King Jr., and that is, "Our lives begin to end the moment we become silent about the things that matter." And so in this representative government, where we're supposed to have a voice in government, I feel like we don't. And so that is my top priority, to make sure that the people of District 28 finally have a voice in Tallahassee. In 2014, the whole state, not just District 28, but the whole state passed Amendment 1 to conserve our water and our land. And when we passed that overwhelmingly, regardless of party affiliation, we told the legislature that conservation was important to us because we know that in Florida, the environment is the economy. And so understanding this, we told Tallahassee, "Hey, this is our priority. This is something that means a lot to us." And our voices were not heard. They misappropriated that money, and so we were not able to be heard. And so when things like that happen and we're not able to have our voices be heard in Tallahassee, the idea of a representative government starts to diminish. And so that is my top priority, to truly represent the people in my district. And that is what I plan to do when I get elected on November 6. That's true. The candidates, this mic is very strong, and there are some people who are asking you to pull it away a little bit.
My top priority as a legislator, is this a good distance for you and you?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure I've got... My top priority is to do something about water quality issues in this state. This is something that we are all extremely concerned about. It impacts our lifestyles, our health, our economy. And so I want to put together a comprehensive bill addressing water quality issues, reinstate the harmful alcohol bloom task force so that we have scientists and experts to advise us on what needs to be done. But I think right away, we can begin to reinstate some of the nutrient pollution standards that have been lax, have been allowed to go lax in the past eight years so that we can stop putting so much pollution into our water. I would also advocate for inspecting septic systems, going forward with septic-to-sewer conversions, going forward with comprehensive Everglades restoration plans, and that we are definitely making the various storage reservoirs we need. We do need to buy more land south of Lake Obatoni. Not all the land, not by any stretch, but we need to buy more than we currently have so that we can have filtration marches for water that needs to flow south in order to rehydrate the Everglades and Florida Bay. So this is the thing that I think is top of everyone's mind here in District 80, in Collier County, in Hendrick County, in Fort Myers, certainly, Lee County, and really all across Southern Florida, or what are we gonna do about these water quality issues? And so that is my top priority as a legislator.
Hi again. My name is Byron Donalds. I'm running for reelection in Florida House District 80. Water issues obviously are critical, and I think they probably will be a question mark, so I'll touch on that later. But my top priority is the same as it was when I ran for election back in 2016, and that is education reform. You see, the future of our economy, the future of our state, the future of our constitutional republic are the young people who are in our classrooms every day who are going to inherit it. What we have to understand, we have to come to grips with, is that in our state, and frankly, not just in our state, but in many states in the country, proficiency in math and reading are around 35%. That's where it is in the state of Florida. Proficiency, not basic skill, not basic, not basic knowledge of math and reading. I'm talking about proficiency. Proficiency in math and reading is what allows young people to become captains of industry. It's what allows young people to go out and start their own businesses. It's what allows young people to be leaders in the future role that they want to inherit. I know that we talk about water and the economy, crime, and terror, and foreign policy, all these things, and taxes. But the future of our state, in the future of our country, is the education of our kids. And that will always be my number one priority while I'm in the Florida Legislature. Now, how does that look? That looks a number of ways. We currently are in the information age, yet we still have an educational system that was created right after the agrarian, right after the agrarian age in our country, moving into the industrial revolution. That is where we deliver education. If you're going to have a world-class educational model where our young people can move into the information age, then we have to have a system for delivering education that mirrors the technological basis you're going to inherit in their lives. That's the core of what I believe. That's the core of what I fight for in the legislature. And if reelected, that is what I'm gonna continue to advocate for as I've advocated for that in my first few years in the Florida House. Thank you.
Okay, so when I hear top priority, I think something that we can jump into Tallahassee and get right off the ground right away. And for me, the one thing that we can do that will affect as many people as possible that we can pass right away is to finally expand Medicaid in our state. Over 800,000 people in our state don't have even access to healthcare because they don't get it from their employer, they can't afford to get it on their own, and they can't get Medicaid due to them making too much money. So the first thing, the first thing we can do, and it's something that the state legislators should have taken action on long, long ago, and they didn't just do to political parties fighting against each other, is that we need to expand Medicaid in this state once and for all. Okay?
I'm Sarah McFadden. I'm running for Florida House 106. And I have to piggyback because I don't wanna... This is gonna be an educational exercise, and I don't wanna repeat what's already been said. But I love what Anissa had to say about representation. That's why I'm running. I don't feel represented. Maybe you don't either. I think that the reason we don't have many people here tonight from our opponents is that they're at fundraisers. And they're at fundraisers because special interests has taken over Tallahassee. And the reason why we're underfunding the things that are important to us, which certainly the environment, certainly education, healthcare, and public safety, and on and on and on. I liked what Dr. Bader had to say about... What did you talk about? Environment. And I actually wrote about that and then made this family news and what solutions we could start to do. And they included protecting our water and cleaning up our waste, sending water south, and making it all work. And it is complicated, absolutely. I liked what Bader had to say as well. Expanding Medicaid would be the thing that we can do right away. So I wanna talk about that a little bit more. If we expand Medicaid, we go from paying for 40% of the cost to covering more people for less. We would save $10 billion a year. Now, we're in, it started in 2013, and we've missed out all of those years. That $10 billion was for a 10-year period, but it's $10 billion a year. So we could catch up to it right away. That's money that we paid in taxes to Washington, and it would be coming back to us instead of being distributed to 33 other states that were way smarter than Florida, and they took it and we didn't. That means $10 billion is circulating through our economy with 71,000 more jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. As county commissioner, one of the things that I see that many of our residents here in Carter County are hurting with, from teachers, from our chefs, from those who work in our hotels, from those that provide us many of our services, our nurses, the affordable housing issue is something that has been on the table for many years and still has not been addressed. Now we're seeing that more of the elderly who are here have relatives and different family members who want to help them in their journey. And because of the affordable housing situation, they're not able to live here in Carter County. Many people who grew up here, who are no longer here because of that. And I believe that that is an area where as a county commissioner, we can work together with the housing industry and incentivize ways that we can continue to have a better and thriving community here in Carter County. Not only that, but that helps for us to bring businesses here when they know they'll have a population that will stay. And it would be a chance for us to work together with education, bringing better education empowers other businesses to know that it is a win-win to come to Carter County and give us a chance for higher-paying jobs which work hand-in-hand with our affordable housing. I thank you for your support, and I would love to work together with the different organizations, different state representatives to bring forth this change in Carter County. And that is why I'm running for county commissioner.
District 4, I explained where it is. A lot of District 4 borders the Gulf of Mexico. There are three districts and a commission that have their area on the water. The water has always been our quality of life. And I've always been concerned about quality of life. It's about being able to recreate if water gets clean. It's to be able to be safe when you are in parks. It is to be able to allow your children to ride their bicycles down the street and not fear that they're gonna be abducted. Quality of life encompasses the way we live. And those of us who have been here a long time remember the way it was. And now we're here, 2018, and I have four years to look at quality of life. And we are working on it on the commission. But it's much broader than just the standard quality of life. It's about being able to have decent housing. It's about understanding what our economy is and to be able to attract companies that will pay higher. It's about working with other municipalities in the county to create a fertilizer ordinance. It's about making sure there's never, ever any grass in the medians again. It's understanding, it's making the changes that we have to make in order to move us into this 21st century. And I've got my sleeves rolled up, and I'm ready to do it.
Thank you. So top priorities, environment, healthcare, but also the health of our democracy. And I think that's about it. Pete Pollard's a good man. We have spent a fair amount of time together over the course of this campaign at forums. But Pete's a writing candidate. His name will not be on your ballot. The two names on the ballot for Congress in the 19th district are mine, David Holden, and the incumbent, Francis Rooney. Mr. Rooney, also a good man, has made a choice to not debate in any forum. He said today to the news press, "I will never be in the same room with him." Maybe it's my cologne. But he's missing a wonderful opportunity and I think an essential factor in our democracy because these forums are not essentially about candidates talking. They're about candidates listening to people in the community. Because leadership is not someone standing here with the microphone, hopefully not speaking too loudly, telling you what the solution is. I believe leadership is the community coming together where we have a conversation to first identify what are the critical issues that we face, what are the priorities that we place on those issues that we face, and then to come up together with solutions that we can implement together. That's my idea of leadership, and that's what I hope to offer the people of the 19th district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Because you were last, so to speak. We're going to go with the second question in reverse order. Okay? We want to be fair in all respects. So the second question, "Healthcare is important to all Americans. What approach do you favor moving forward?"
In the richest country in the history of the world, which is the United States of America, healthcare should be a human right and not a privilege. Now, when you find yourself in a hole and you wanna get out of that hole, the first thing you do is stop digging. So let's stop these efforts to destroy the Affordable Care Act. The Affordable Care Act is by no means perfect, but it has provided millions of Americans and thousands of people in southwest Florida with the first real healthcare insurance and access to healthcare that they've had in many years. I support Senator Tim Kaine's Medicare X proposal, which would allow Americans to buy into the same healthcare programs that federal employees enjoy, while still allowing folks in the private system to retain those coverages if that's what they want. So we're not gonna solve this problem immediately, but one thing we can do is stop the damage to our healthcare system. This is essential. This will be among my top priorities when I take office in January, is to make sure that this administration no longer undermines the Affordable Care Act. We're hearing talk of bringing back pre-existing conditions. How many people in this room either have a pre-existing condition or love somebody with a pre-existing condition? So we're not gonna go back to the time when those pre-existing conditions kept you from getting essential healthcare. We're simply not gonna do that. And I'm gonna meet that effort, and I thank you.
This is, yeah, it's on. Okay. We were unsure whether it was on. Well, I'm a county commissioner. I do not have a vote in Congress. I cannot control what they do in Congress at the federal level. All I can do is work with four other people to bring change here. And one of the initiatives that I didn't bring, but that I'm supporting, and I know this is like, oh, the blue zone. But what does that mean? Their influence on us as a government has been profound. We are now going to start putting exercise, proper exercise areas in our complex, which we never, ever did before. We have a very aggressive healthcare plan that insists that we take care of ourselves, or else, guess what? We pay more money. So there's a lot of incentivization going on that I truly support. What I can't comment on because it's not in the purview of a county commissioner is what we can do about what the state has done to Medicaid and what the federal government has. But as a former foster parent, I know, because I was a foster parent when it all started to change. And I remember doctors telling me that they had children coming to them with these incredible eye diseases that they could not serve because they were not being insured. And it was like that. And that was a sin. And I can never support that.
I might add, and that's totally appropriate, Ms. Hillary, this question is, overlaps many of these candidates' positions. So, for example, county commission doesn't have direct representation and make direct decisions over healthcare. So I appreciate your comment.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, great. As she stated, county commissioners do not have so much of a say-so over that. But I do wanna work together with all of those organizations who are bringing education, bringing education to our communities, on what are things that we can do beforehand, before we have to go to a doctor and see a doctor. I wanna continue to encourage them and see as a county commissioner, what is it that we can do in our budget? Or what is it that we can do to encourage workshops, to encourage different programs that continue to bring education to our communities? As we see Naples has become a place that they have dubbed it where the patient and their nurse live together. Because Naples is a place where retirement Because Naples is a place where retirement is most of our community, is a retirement community. So we want to be able to work together in bringing activities that continually have them mobile, different organizations that are working together to bring resources to make sure that they can have affordable healthcare, not only for those who are retired, but those who are in a working class right now. Those who are unable because of their income to take themselves into a doctor. I want to see what we can do as county commissioners, working together to bring resources to our citizens and our residents here in Naples.
You're right, Eric. Wellness is cheaper with long-term disease. And yet, we have so many uninsured people in Florida. And to continue my thought about expanding Medicaid, that cuts the uninsured rate in half. Just expanding Medicaid, which we've already established, saves us money. It's cheaper and it covers more people. It covers 800,000 more people. At least half of those are uninsured. So when they go to an emergency room, we're paying for that. We're paying the cost. We're subsidizing them already. So think of that as that $10 billion annually circulates through our economy. 71,000, more than 71,000 more jobs, good jobs, good-paying jobs, helping our economy in every way. That's an economic stimulus. And on top of that, you get the benefits of a healthier population, which makes us more productive, which makes us better employees. It's hand-in-hand. It's a no-brainer and yet, we as a state have refused this since 2013.
I know.
More than one person knows. So I think that's really important. The other thing we can do, there's something called Kids Care, which is a state program and it covers uninsured children. And it's difficult for many people to make the premiums and they often drop out if there's a storm or whatever. It could be more organized. It could be easier to access, for instance. And those would be changes that I would suggest as well.
So like I said earlier, we need to expand Medicaid in the state to cover over 800,000 people. I agree with Sarah with Kid Care. We need to expand Kid Care. There's a lot of families in the state that have to decide who actually goes on their insurance plans. Even if they get it from their employer, sometimes those plans are too expensive because they have too many people on their families. And if they're able to put their kids on Kid Care, then the parents can actually have insurance. The issue I have with the healthcare debate is that we're not talking about healthcare. Every single time you have a healthcare debate, we end up talking about insurance. And we know insurance is broken. We know it's not working. But we need to make it a point of making sure that we start focusing on preventative care. And we've touched on it already. The problem is that we're not preventing diseases. We're not preventing problems. So when you end up going to the doctor because you can't stand up anymore or you pass out, not even knowing what's happening. Or you go to the emergency room because there's a tumor coming out of your neck, then you're paying double what you would have paid at first if you would have caught it beforehand. So expand Medicaid. Make sure we have more access to Kid Care. And I don't care what they call it. I don't care if they call it single-payer, Medicare for All. It doesn't matter. But we need to make sure that we're able to cover every single person in this state with healthcare. Like David said, healthcare is a right and not a privilege. And we need to make sure that Florida's got that.
Something tells me this is where the applause is going to stop. A couple. Like I said, I'm currently in a legislature right now. The vote to not expand Medicaid in Florida was done in 2013. The reason why the Florida House did not vote to expand Medicaid in 2013 is because the price tag of Medicaid expansion is an additional $1 billion every year on the state's budget. That is the price tag. Now, I know the argument is, well, the federal government is paying 90%. They're paying 90% and the state will only have to pick up 10%. In the first three years of the Affordable Care Act, that was wrong was in the long. But after those first three years, which are all passed now, the government can make those changes with respect to the reimbursement rates and Medicaid expansion. That is what the law states right now. If you're planning the future of your state from a fiscal perspective, only looking at Medicaid, then yeah, it's a no-brainer. But that's not the reality you have as a legislator. As a legislator, you have to make sure there's funding available for transportation. You have to make sure there's funding available for education, which is the number-one thing we spend our money on in our state. You have to make sure there's funding available for Medicare and for the hospital system and for the court system and for the other things that the state government does provide. And you have to balance all these. Here's what we actually did in the legislature. We made sure that we provided it as much funding as we could for Kids Care, so kids could go on Medicaid. We'd make sure that we provided as much funding as we could for people who are disabled to go on Medicaid. What we didn't provide money for was for people who are able-bodied to go on Medicaid. That is what we did not do. Now, what can we do going forward? Two things. Number one, we actually have to look at finding ways to make sure that small businesses can pull risk together. There are association plans that are out there. We need to be able to do that for small businesses. That's one thing we can do. But the one thing I will tell you that we should not do is adopt the plan that's now being called Medicaid for All. That plan will cost the state of Florida approximately $174 billion just to transition to.
So, there are different views on this subject, obviously. I would say that the Florida Policy Institute disagrees with Mr. Donald's about his conclusion regarding expanding Medicaid. The Florida Policy Institute says that we will get the $6 billion back that we spend in federal tax dollars every year and it will actually save the Florida budget $550 million a year. And that's because we pay for healthcare largely. Just as Sarah mentioned, we pay when people go to the emergency room and there's nobody else to pick up the bill. So it makes more sense to give people the dignity of healthcare to begin with and to expand Medicaid. And, you know, kind of beating a dead horse because a lot of people here agree and a lot of people across the state agree. In fact, Florida is ranked 48th in healthcare overall in the nation and 46th in people being covered by insurance. So there's a great need for people to get healthcare in the state of Florida. And we can save money overall by expanding Medicaid. So I'm completely in favor of that. So, another thing I'd like to talk about, which is a little bit different, regards to water quality and public health. Right now, our health departments in Florida are not being honest with us when it comes to the impact of toxic algae exposure. They're kind of ignoring it. And so that is something I would want to make sure that people are being properly warned and cared for when it comes to toxic algae exposure. Thank you.
Okay, so is this all right? Is this level right?
Beautiful.
I don't know, blah, blah, blah. So I also would like to talk about fiscal responsibility. We are paying for a broken healthcare system. And so if we're going to pay good taxpayer money for a system that does not serve everybody, that does not allow people the dignity to go to the doctor when they're sick, then we need to change that. We need to expand Medicaid. When the legislature initially made the decision not to expand Medicaid, one of the comments that was made was, "We can't trust the feds to pay us that money." Well, guess what? The feds gave us 30% of our state budget. We rely on them for, actually, it's between 33% and 35% of our state budget. So we rely on them for that money, but we didn't take the Medicaid money. If we want to do better for the people of this state, we can accept Medicaid and then work with the federal government to make that system better. We cannot lead 800,000 people in the dark. That is unconscionable. The business of government is well-being. Those taxpayer dollars that we have sitting in Washington, D.C., that other states are taking advantage of, we should be able to reap the benefits of those tax dollars. Those were the tax dollars that we've sent to them. As our world changes, as our climate changes, which we know is happening, it's real, right? Climate change is real. Our sea levels are rising. We have more and more pollution in the air. We will need to make sure that people have access to healthcare. And the innovations in healthcare are growing also. So those costs can come down just by investing in good innovation. We have to make sure that when people have an issue, they can live in dignity and not wait until they have to go to the emergency room where we pick up the tab anyway. They should be able to go to the doctor, take care of their problem, hopefully have it be stabilized or cured so they can live in dignity and continue to work, continue to be productive members of our society. When I go to Tallahassee, I will make sure that I vote to expand Medicaid.
I support Medicaid for All because of the affordability issue. If you pay for health insurance through insurance, which is a terrible way to fund health insurance, or healthcare, I should say, you're always going to have an affordability issue. Right now, every health insurance policy that covers Floridians is sold in the state of Florida. It's governed by the State Board of Insurance. They all, the authority in town has to decide what policies can be offered in the state and what the price levels are. If you get the state out of it, go back to the federal government, which does not have an issue with affordability, then you can go to best practice for the entire country. Not just one section of the country, not just one state. I can't say it too many times. There is an affordability issue at the federal level in the United States of America. We have a solid democracy. We bring as much money as we need. We need only tax out as much as necessary. It happens to be true. So there is no affordability issue where insurance is concerned or any other matters, if you're at the federal level. So you have to take care of these needs at the appropriate level. Healthcare is not approved for a state budget. You don't have the tax base for it, but the feds do. That's why I support Medicaid for All.
Okay, our third question.
Yes.
Red tide has become an economic and quality of life issue for those of us who live in southwest Florida. How will we solve this? I know several of you have addressed it already, but let's get a little bit more to a micro level and see, we know the seriousness of it. So if we could, we could start with you, Mr. Pollard. Oh, thank you.
So how are we going to stop red tide? Well, this naturally occurring, we've had it since Europeans, have been aware of it since Europeans first came here and it keeps getting progressively worse. I don't think there's any doubt about it. There's a lack of scientific evidence that indicates that it's worse because of pollution. So to control red tide, we control the pollution. To get to the Reader's Digest version of this, how would I control red tide? I turn Lake Okeechobee into a crown jewel in southwest Florida, or south Florida. I turn it into a huge aquaponage project. I seed it with water hyacinth as a triology method, so it's soaked up the nitrogen, the phosphorus. Hyacinth can double its bulk in as little as 12 days. The state has had 100 years, remember how to fight it? It's a big, open field, Lake Okeechobee. So it'd be easy to harvest, easy to remove. And as we get the nutrient levels down, we can then add other edible crops to Lake Okeechobee. But the lake is an unutilized piece of land. It's 700 square miles and there's not a building on it. It should have gardens. It should have cheeky huts for canoeists and kayakers. It should have vegetable gardens and flower gardens. It should have a commercial fishery. When I was a kid, it had a thriving commercial fishery. I don't think there is one now. We can do all of this. We go back to when the Spanish arrived down in Mexico. They found a place called Tito's Teakland. And it was this huge lake, surrounded by Mexico City, and that was one thriving water garden. It's a huge area. It fed a city of 200,000 people. It was the cleanest, most well-protected city in the world. We can do the same thing with Lake Okeechobee.
So yes, red tide is a naturally occurring organism. It is native to our Gulf ecosystem. The problem is that we are exacerbating red tide with pollution and we can't keep feeding this organism. I have friends that are chartered fishermen. They have had to go out 40 miles before they even found something living that they could actually have the folks on their boat catch. What scares me the most is that we're not just seeing fish kills. We're seeing aquatic animals from every level of the food chain on our beaches. So it's not only an environmental issue. It's an economic issue and it's a public health issue. Yes, the idea is to stop pollution. Not only from Lake Okeechobee. That's not the only place that the pollution comes from. We have septic systems in this state that need to be inspected. We have to make sure that Everglades Agricultural Area is being good stewards of our community and not polluting Lake Okeechobee. We have to make sure that the fertilizers that we use that are running off of our lawns aren't polluting our water. We also have to make sure that we manage our stormwater systems appropriately. Everybody thinks about Lake Okeechobee. Everybody thinks about the Coliseum and then our coast. We're not thinking about stormwater and that's where we're going to go down, that's where we're going to go wrong. We have to think about stormwater. That is where counties come in. And in Collier County, if you go to the Gordon River Greenway, just above the Gordon River Greenway is Freedom Park. The county bought Freedom Park, 13 and a half acres, to actually filter portions of the Gordon River. They're making sure, the county through the Conservation Collier Program, is taking a responsible role in making sure that we are cleaning the river and they're also working on stormwater. But it's everybody making sure that we are conscious of the actions that we're taking. The change comes in Tallahassee because we have to make the polluters pay. We have to make sure that when pollution occurs, they're paying for it. Most likely, though, we have to prevent it. That's what we have to do in Tallahassee.
Well, as you can imagine, I'm pretty much on board with what Lisa and Esther. We absolutely need to do something about pollution that's going into our waterways. And there are a lot of different sources of that pollution. There's no one bad guy in this drama that we're all living in here. There are dairy farms and ranches upstream of Lake Okeechobee. And from the science, I've seen a lot of the current nutrient pollution, what we're talking about fertilizer and sewage essentially, is coming from the north right now. There certainly is legacy pollution in Lake Okeechobee that comes from the sugar industry that coming into the lake in years past. So there's a lot of pollution that we need to do something about. But I would advocate helping those farmers upstream of Lake Okeechobee get back to nutrient pollution standards and helping them meet those nutrient pollution standards in a way that doesn't break them. And that is entirely possible. Other states with large farming industries have solutions for this problem. We can implement those solutions as well. Certainly, we need more land in southwest Florida. As I said, we don't need it all. We just want the sugar industry and Everglades Agricultural Area to just be good neighbors. We need a bit more land than we currently have to build the filtration marches to move water south safely and restore the Everglades. An answer that has been proposed is to build deep-water injection wells that we can pump the polluted water into before it gets into Lake Okeechobee. And I can understand the appeal of that. It sounds like a quick solution to get rid of dirty water. But I think in the long term, it's a dangerous solution because what happens if something goes wrong? And people will say, "Oh, but it's been done safely." But we have to trust that the people who are doing it are doing it safely. There could be seismic effects. And so that, to me, is not the best solution. We need to clean up the pollution. Thank you.
The issues associated with red tide are somewhat different from what's going on with blue brain algae, particularly, you know, right now with Cape Coral and parts of the Coliseum. We have a couple of things going on. Number one, there is a major septic problem in the state of Florida. One of my colleagues, Randy Fine, out of DeMar County, proposed a bill to actually have them all inspected. That bill didn't go anywhere in the House. We discussed that legislation ad nauseam. And that's something that we're going to be looking at going forward. I actually talked with him last week about that policy in particular. Another big thing we have is that we do have municipalities that if their stormwater systems are backed up, they do pump a portion of that into water bodies. That happens. I was actually in St. Petersburg a month ago. A friend of mine, he had a home on water. I went to go visit him and literally, his father was out on their dock pulling up stuff, putting it in a little basket so we could take it to USM to go restudying. That's one of the things we have to look at. I would say that Dr. Waterker is correct. Most of the problems with Lake Okeechobee actually happen north of the lake, not south of the lake. If you actually, if we're going to be factual about this, the farmers in the EAA, through their best management practices, are actually doing a terrific job of making sure that they protect our environment. What I would caution everybody to do... What I would caution everyone, before you start shaking your head, is actually go out to the EAA and meet with these farmers, and actually see the culverts, and see the work that has been done. I've done that work. I've been on the lake. We do have sea rats in the lake. A lot of it right now has died because the lake level's actually rising, and so, we don't want to keep the lake level too high. So, those are all the things that are going. Now, quickly, to deep injection wells. Deep injection wells were actually part of the original CIRP. They have been studied for a very long time, they are currently in use. It's not a fracturing project, but I know many of you probably do CIRP with hydraulic fracturing. That's actually not the case with deep injection wells. They were used in our state today, they have been used in our state for a very long time.
So, it's funny, I live in Miami-Dade, but I've been coming over to Congress since I started running. And just about two or three weeks ago, all the politicians and all the people in Miami started running around like they had, like their hair was on fire, because we have red tide now, we have red tide now. Like, this is, like, this has been going on for months. The only thing is that I've been coming over to this coast, and they haven't even heard anything of it. So, we need to make sure that we make it more of a priority, because Lake Okeechobee is not just a Lake Okeechobee problem, it's not just a central Florida problem, it's a statewide problem. And we need to take care of Lake Okeechobee like it's our problem, because it is. And there's something I like to piggyback off a lot of people, and I say, "I'm not a scientist," but I do listen to them. And these two ladies right over here are amazing, and I agree with everything they said, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse.
Okay, I'm not a scientist. I was an English major. That means I'm a good researcher, and I understand what people talk, what they say. It's interesting that we're talking about septic systems, because in 2010, a law did pass the legislature, and it required septic inspections, because it is a huge problem, especially along the Kissimmee River. In 2012, the legislature, in their wisdom, decided to repeal that bill. It never got started. And then, the rest of the time between then and now, they've been able to point their fingers at the Kissimmee River and say, "They're the problem." Yes, they contribute to the problem, but we need to keep them accountable. You know, and if people can't afford it, then it needs to be subsidized, because it's ruining our rivers. And then, those nutrients, and nutrients means sewage, more sewage, fertilizer, and farm waste. I mean, when that reaches the Gulf, the naturally occurring red tide blooms and releases neurotoxins. That's why you start to cough. Long term, that can affect liver damage, they think Alzheimer's. Again, this is a health issue, but it's also a huge economic issue. The sugar producers contribute a $7 billion industry a year. Tourism, fishing, and boating is 110. What did I say? I meant 7 billion. Did I say 7 billion? Tourism, boating, and fishing is 110 billion dollars a year. And there is back pumping into Lake Okeechobee. The best management practices are not, it's just a slap on the wrist. You know, they're not, there are no nutrient standards for what goes into the lake by any means. We need to have strict fertilizer standards at a state level that affects everybody. That's one instance where home rule is not working for us. And you know I appreciate home rule. Thank you so much.
Yes, as we see, the, the, we're issues a very big issue with us in southwest Florida. As we know, many of us have come to call the beaches our home, have come to call the water in southwest Florida our home. And what happens is when we have issues of algae or issues of red tide, that hurts many of our fishermen, that hurts many of those businesses that bring in their income through that, that economy. So, what happens is, it, it slows down our, our economic mobility, and I think that this is an area where we can continue to educate. Educate our residents on what they can do, educate businesses on what they can do to prevent this from happening and beginning to grow. I, I think it's something that many of us are not scientists, or we don't know exactly how to take control of it, but working together with Elise and Corrie, and Jennifer Bodiger, it gives us a chance to have experts in that industry, in that field, in that area, and then give us a chance to strategize for the future of what we can do to have preventative measures in place. So, thank you both of you for a year of your help, everything that you're doing and giving us more education and enlightenment. I really know that working together, it gives us a chance to move forward.
Again, we'll talk about Collier County and my position as a county commissioner. I've been a strong supporter of stormwater, stormwater fee, which of course didn't pass, it wasn't rolled out properly, it was, I think, basically organically unfair. We're going to talk about it again, but the summer of 2018 has changed the discussion about stormwater, because not only is it quali, quantity, it is quanti, quality, excuse me, not only is it quantity, it's quality. And forever, that's going to be linked together. So, suddenly, we've got an issue with stormwater, where we, we have to understand, how much are we really putting into this environment? And could we hold back more, especially in Collier County, where so much is yet to be developed? And so, that is something that we are talking about on the county commission. Are we going to do it drastically? I don't think so. But, are we going to do it? Yes. What if we insist and have in our ordinances that they, that these new developments cannot release as much water as they normally have? We owe it to restore our aquifer. Red tide is a naturally occurring organism. But, if you look at the peninsula of Florida, and you see how much development is touching the Atlantic Ocean, and also the Straits of Florida, and the Gulf of Mexico, you can understand why we have red tide, and why it's getting worse. And we need to understand what we individually, when we point here, three fingers are pointing guidance, we all have to take responsibility for this, because it is our state, and we can make these changes. Thank you.
Now, for individual questions. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so anxious to ask this next question.
It's got to be a good one.
I am so sorry.
I don't know that I can add more to the perspectives we heard, so I'd like to take a different tack. I'm not a politician, and I decided in 2016, my wife and I decided that we had to get more involved in the process, because we felt our country was on the wrong track. So, we have to ask another question. Why can't we get our arms around these problems? Red tide isn't new. We've had terrible, this year's been particularly bad, but we've had bad years before. Everybody knows that we have a problem with Lake Okeechobee. We can't seem to get anything done. We have to follow the money, right? So, I filed my latest report yesterday. I urge you to go to FVC.gov and see who's donating to my campaign, and see who's donating to Mr. Rooney's campaign. I urge you to go to the state and look at everybody's money, right? There's three pieces to the pie, and the pie is called corruption. The first is unlimited, unregulated, untraceable dark money. The second piece is unlimited, unregulated lobbying. And the third leg of the pie, that doesn't even work, is partisan gerrymandering. Legislators should not be choosing their voters, voters should be choosing their leaders. And we have to have, we have to have integrity. So, I am going to fight partisan gerrymandering even when the Democrats control Tallahassee, because it's bad for our country and it's bad for democracy.
So, we're going to get to some Q and A from the audience. And this first question is directed to Representative Donalds and Dr. Bodiger. Thank you. During your candidacy, what have you done to advance education in public schools? It's a question from the audience.
Well, to be frank, in defense of my opponent, I'm not sure, I'm, in defense of her, I'm not sure she can answer that question. Listen, in this, in the part of, when you're, when you're campaigning for office, what you're doing is taking your ideas to the voters. That's what you're doing. In my campaign, I know specifically that when I talk to voters, whether they live here in Collier County or they live in Hendrick County, I talk about my ideas, about what I think the future of education would look like. Do I think parents should be empowered? That's what I believe, that's what I talk to voters about. Do I think that there should be options for all children, no matter what their style of learning is? I talk about that. Should there be reforms in vocational education? And with respect to how we kind of do it today versus what the future looks like, and how we should do it in the future? I talk about those things. Specifically, I guess, maybe there's more question for in the legislature, but in the legislature, I sponsor legislation dealing with textbook reviews. I sponsored a new, a new scholarship program, called the Hope Scholarship Program, dealing with students who are affected by school violence. Actually, it was actually funny, after we left this room two weeks ago, it came out about two days later, that there was a young, a young student in Amokalee Middle School who was violently assaulted in the bathroom. Violently assaulted in the bathroom. And she was sitting in the same classroom with the girl who assaulted her, and the mother was looking for answers, saying, "How is it that this child that assaulted my daughter is still in the same history classroom?" And so, I filed legislation to help give that, the daughter, the child that was assaulted, give her an opportunity to continue her career somewhere else. So, her parent could be, have all the information.
Why shouldn't she?
But, excuse me, excuse me now, but the reality is, if your child is subjected to that kind of, that kind of trauma, as a parent, you have every right to find out all the information for your child. And if we disagree on that, fine, but I will always stand on the side of empowering parents. So, in this campaign, that's the message I take to all people about how, how it would impact education in our state.
Well, obviously, I haven't, since I'm running for office for the first time, I haven't had a chance to follow any legislation. I do have strong ideas about what should be done, and that is to support public education, which implicates investment in local schools.
No child is free.
We're in 45th overall in teacher pay, 26th overall in educational achievement within the state according to Education Weekly. We have some work to do in terms of making sure that our public schools are as good as they possibly could be. So, I would advocate actually that we need to rein in some of the money that we're spending on school voucher programs. And I, I totally do. I was a bullied child myself, and I have utmost sympathy for other bullied children. But, I do think that there are better ways of dealing with that situation than giving every child who's bullied a scholarship to private school. Moving the child within the public school system maybe is something that I would be in favor of, but I think that the Hope Scholarship Program really expands our spending on voucher programs in a way that really impacts the budgets that we can use to improve public education. I also think that we need much better accountability and transparency with regard to charter schools, how they are set up, where they are allowed to open, because some charter schools are excellent, but not all of them, and many of them in the state of Florida actually close very quickly, and sometimes taking the money that they use to start with them, and the taxpayers never get that money back. We need to improve transparency and accountability so that we're not throwing money away on charter schools that are never going to make it. In terms of textbook review, I think that, that impedes on home rule. I don't think that we need to have people who are a part of the school system coming in and questioning textbooks that the school board disclaims. Thank you.
So, when I ask these questions, in all fairness, I have to ask them to both, both candidates, or however many candidates are here for that, for that position. So, this question is actually to all the candidates. Do you take money from special interests? So, when, when this was brought up just a few minutes ago, all the ones, so we're, we're also, we kind of have been directed now.
I do not take money from any of them.
I don't take money from anyone, I have an aspirate.
I do not take money from special interests. I do not accept money from the NRA. I do not accept money from super PACs. You can go look at my report and see that I'm telling the truth.
I do not take money from special interests or corporations.
I do, it's a free country. If you want to donate to a campaign, that is your choice as an American, that isn't a choice of which is the money that you want.
Is that through the NRA?
To answer that question, the NRA does not give money. And it's, you know, it's actually tough.
Okay, let's see the cycle.
I thought we were, I thought we were going to actually be educated so we can improve our democracy. So, if we're going to improve our democracy, or I like to call it, which it actually is, our constitutional republic, let's actually be educated on this. The NRA does not give any political candidate or elected official campaign donations. They, they do not. You can go look at my report specifically, and you will not find money from the National Rifle Association, or frankly, any other rifle group that there is. Here is what they do. They have people who are members of their organization that contributes to their political activities, and if they decide they want to support a candidate, they will send out advocacy on behalf of that candidate. That is what the NRA does. So, let's be, so let's not just use buzzwords and bumper sticker slogans, let's actually be factual about what actually happens. The NRA does not give money to political candidates. I do not take money from the NRA. The NRA doesn't give money. They do advocate on candidates that they support. That, and those are the facts.
What big companies do you take money from?
I, what I, I would tell you, go to the state's website, and you can look at my entire report.
Freedom of information.
It's there for, not even freedom of information, it's there for everybody to see.
Thank you, thank you.
No, I do not do my bachelor.
I think I mentioned it, my opponent is at a fundraiser right now, and as of, what, maybe two weeks ago, he had collected $112,000 just this cycle for, from special interests. Now, some of those interests would be sugar, mining, ranching, realtors associations, automobile dealer associations, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Associated Industries of Florida are, I understand, bunglers, and that might be sources of money that you can't trace. I am sugar-free, and although I'm an English major, I'm a candidate for science, and I'm clean and green, and I do not take money from special interests.
I'm sorry, I do not take money from special interests.
Well, if you call developers special interests in Collier County, I've taken money from them. If you call bankers special interests, I've taken money from them. If you call the elderly people living on my block, I've taken money from them. So, what I'm saying is, on my race, at least on the county commission level, special interests are not the special interests that would be on the congressional level or even on the state level. My constituents, and even outside my district, fully have contributed to me, but they know who I am. And how they know who I am is that I have a track record. And frankly, what happened was, when I first was elected to the county commission, or to the city council in the city of Naples, I was the vote, the deciding vote to overturn Sable Bay. And they know that, because I don't, I can't be bought. That's the difference. So, if you're going to give me money, you're going to give me money to represent you, but I have a conscience, and they know that, I have a track record. Thank you. I have a conscience, and they know that. I have a track record. Thank you. This, this question is directed to the candidates for county commission. How do you plan to stop profiling of the brown and black community in Carter County? Well, of course, they, they say there's no profiling. Um, but we know that human nature is human nature, and there's a history of it. I'm sorry. You know, this is the, is that the one? Yes, yes. I said, they know, you want me to get yours? And so. Anyway, we know that there is profiling. We know that human nature is human nature. Uh, we know that the talk, which I was interested very, to listen to, um, a, a black father tell his daughter about the talk about, if you get pulled over, this is what you do. Uh, we have to be vigilant. We have to answer our phones when people call. We have to be unafraid to stand up to authority. And we have to stand up for what is right.
Yes, that is a great question. Thank you for that question, whoever asked it. Um, there's a great community here, and I want to encourage everybody who has been, um, helpful in helping the brown and black skin neighbor go through times like this. The harassment in Carter County, being pulled over, this is something that happens day after day. But what I want to do is be that voice that helps work together. Police departments, our officers, we do have great officers here in our county, but there are a few of them that go outside of the boundaries, go outside of the policy. And I believe as we continue to encourage those that are doing right and educate those who want to be better officers, who want to serve our community much better, to do better in helping them. I think it's a great way for us to grow our community. It is a great way for us to work together and have a better tomorrow. But it starts with education. Our 287 G law is not right. It is breaking up families. It is tearing apart children and parents. And this is not something that represents Carter County or who we are. I think we owe them a better, a better alternative. I think we owe them as county commissioners to make better laws and policies that give us a chance to stay together as families, that give our community a chance to know where they can receive assistance and being documented properly and knowing that they have no fear when they drive. They have no fear that the police officer is just stopping them because of the skin color of their, the skin color they have. And I think it's a time that this ends. And I think this is the place to start that wave, and stopping it starts here. And it starts with us. So thank you, everyone.
This question is directed to candidate Kareem, but I, I, as moderator, believe this should be addressed by the candidates for the state legislature and for Congress because it has to do with veterans. So do you have a plan for veterans with PTSD? Do you think veterans should get free healthcare?
Thank you. Um, yes, I do believe that veterans should get free healthcare. Uh, they put their lives on the line to serve this country and to keep us safe. And we don't know what they go through, uh, abroad. And oftentimes, when they come back, melting back into society, assimilating back into society is not fully possible without some sort of medical help. And sometimes it's not possible at all. So for veterans, I believe they should get free healthcare. I also believe that there should be mental health checkups, whether, quite frankly, whether they want it or not, for the first year, every two months, they should be able to go in. Once that professional has deemed that they don't need anymore, that's fine. But a lot of times veterans don't, don't understand, and it's not just veterans, it's people who have had very traumatic experiences. They don't fully understand what's going, what's happening, uh, with their emotions and with their minds. So I think that having that mental healthcare for them is paramount. This is something that we have to do with the federal government. It should be a state-federal partnership. I think we need to have something in Collier County and actually something that is accessible 24 hours in Collier County. We need to make sure that the veterans suicide hotline is available to our veterans whenever they need, whenever they need it, and that trained professionals are manning that line, uh, 24 hours a day.
Veterans and free healthcare. Anybody here?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Um, I'm a veteran. Spent my time in Germany drinking beer. I didn't, I didn't suffer. I don't, I don't need free healthcare. I think, I think healthcare should be free to the American people. I think it's a benefit, should be a benefit of, of citizenship. Particularly if it's very, very serious and if it's, uh, covers very young. I just, uh, I'm opposed to just about anything that defies us one from the other. I don't want to give free healthcare to a veteran because he served, because he's injured, and not give free healthcare to a battered woman or a child from a recent home.
I'm not a veteran, but my, my dad was. Uh, my dad Harvey volunteered at eighteen, and at nineteen, he was in Germany as part of the US Army Infantry, uh, thirty days after D-Day. And he and millions of other men and women saved the world, uh, for freedom. And, uh, I, I want to use the term free healthcare. You know, when you put on the uniform of the United States military, uh, you're putting your life on the line to preserve our lives and our way of life. And we have a sacred bond to those soldiers. We owe them care, them and their family when they return, regardless of what that need is. Uh, and we're failing our veterans. We're failing them terribly. There are thirty thousand, uh, unfilled jobs in the VA right now. Uh, this administration is talking about, uh, privatizing, uh, veterans' care. I mean, this administration would privatize air if they could figure out a way around. In Lee County, which is the bulk of the nineteenth district, they, they set staffing levels for year-round, uh, veterans residents. Well, the number of veterans in Lee County doubles, uh, in the winter because turns out veterans enjoy sunshine too. Uh, and, and so because of that staffing, those staffing decisions, they're not able to get the care they need in a timely fashion. We absolutely have to improve the quality of care that we provide to our veterans. Uh, it is a, it is a sacred duty of the, of the government and the people in the United States to provide that care. And that will be one of my top priorities in Washington.
Well, second, we have 1.5 million veterans in Florida. Now, we need to, we need to provide facilities that are closer to their homes. We need to monitor their condition. They face issues that other people in the society face as well. But, um, PTSD, uh, suicidal tendencies, um, trying to hold a job. There's a lot of homeless veterans. You know, these people stood up for us. You know, we need to stand up for them.
Yes, yes, yes.
Uh, I absolutely agree. Um, wow, that's a different mic. It's crazy. I absolutely agree. We need to take care of our veterans every way that we can, especially with mental health. Uh, but at the end of the day, we ran forty-seven for mental health in the state of Florida for everybody. Uh, we need to take away the shame that comes with mental healthcare. It's not shameful. It's not something bad that you go through. It's something that a lot of us go through every single day. So we need to start putting a priority on mental healthcare in this state, especially with veterans, but in the long run for everybody in the state. Thank you.
Uh, our veterans absolutely deserve every healthcare benefit that this nation affords them because they put the uniform on, they put their lives into harm's way to protect all of us. And so they, they not only deserve it, they've earned it. Now, that being said, one of the things that has happened in the last couple of years is freeing up veterans to be able to access healthcare by in private sources in the private health insurance market when the VA system couldn't deliver it in a timely fashion. That is an appropriate reform because a veteran who served our nation shouldn't have to wait in line for anybody. And this is sometimes in our politics, we get caught up in, who's doing it? Well, that system did it, so it's okay. But if that system does it, it's terrible. That's ridiculous. Not for the best of us. Not for the people who sacrificed and would have sacrificed everything, those who have and those who would. And so what we do for them, whether it's done through the VA system or through the private system, we should cover it all. Now, specifically to PTSD, there was actually a medical service dog, dog program that, um, the military, the VA was running to give, to give our veterans who were suffering from PSTV, a medical service dog as a companion, as opposed to filling them with prescription drugs. It was a great program. The federal government at that time period, I believe about four or five years ago, didn't continue the program. That's something that we should be doing. We, we all understand in this room that narcotics, um, or pharmaceutical-grade narcotics is not the way to cure mental health conditions, you know, over the long term. That's how you cope with them. And so the medical service dog program was something that was a phenomenal program for the vets in our own community and around our state who took advantage of it. It helped change their quality of life. Everything should be on the table when it comes to those who sacrifice everything for this nation.
Well, I mean, I think we're all agreeing that we need to make sure that veterans have, um, access to good quality care wherever they live. I would support making sure that we get some medical facility here that is part of the VA system. And that's because, um, veterans have, um, needs that are not necessarily always the same as the rest of the general population. They deal with traumatic wounds, for instance. And the VA system is set up to help them with that specifically. Um, and PTSD as well, and, um, suicidal, um, tendencies after returning from, uh, service is something that we really need to address and, um, more timely and making sure that our veterans have access to that, um, wherever they are. And we certainly have a lot of veterans here. Um, I support veterans. My husband is a veteran. He was, um, in the army for eight years and, uh, served in the Gulf War. My dad was a, is a veteran and, and uses VA health services in Tennessee and loves that he's able to do that. Um, so I certainly support free healthcare for our veterans and want to make sure that they have better access to that here in southwest Florida. Um, and I think, uh, that's about all I have to say about that. Thanks.
The next question is for, for all. How do you define government corruption and what would you do to curtail it? Would you endorse the principles of the American Anti-Corruption Act? So I'd like to start with, uh, Mr. Holden.
I was afraid I was going to run out of time earlier. I was going to mention the American Anti-Corruption Act. And I do support the goals of that act, but I would go further to also support overturning the Citizens United decision. We can, uh, respect the institution of the Supreme Court and still, um, be appalled at some of the decisions that they've made over the last decade. And the Citizens United decision is one of the worst, uh, that I think we are living under. It opened up the door to unlimited, untraceable dark money. Uh, it has flooded billions of dollars into our, uh, election system. Uh, that's not traceable. That is, that is not done for the benefit of the American people. Uh, when the Koch brothers pledge eight hundred million dollars, eight hundred million dollars. Think of how much veterans' healthcare could be implemented for eight hundred million dollars. Eight hundred million dollars to spend on this election. It is not for the benefit of the people in this room. It is for the benefit of the Koch brothers. Uh, so nothing changes if nothing changes. Until we pull money out of the system, until we can have regular working people, uh, run for office and win, you know, I am not self-funding, uh, my campaign. I am not a billionaire, as is Mr. Remy. Uh, I might be a thousandaire. So I can't, I can't write myself a check for three million dollars as he did two years ago. And I can't bring in two million dollars from, from, uh, super PACs as he did two years ago. And so I'm running this campaign on a grassroots effort. We've raised money from twenty-five states around the country from three dollars on up, uh, because we're trying to change the way politics works. We're trying to provide a different type of leadership to this country.
Sorry, what was the answer? It doesn't matter. I'm not familiar with it.
I'll give you the, while I can restate, I can say the question again. How do you define government corruption and what would you do to curtail it? Would you endorse the principles of the anti, uh, the American Anti-Corruption Act?
With me, it's always about money. It's always about tax system. Uh, you get rid of the corruption if you stop paying for the corruption. One of the things I would do is in, according to income tax, does far more harm than good. I cover up the individual income tax, the personal income tax, with a broader, uh, gross receipts tax, one that could not be avoided. The biggest problem with the tax system we have is that some taxes can be avoided. Well, if it can be avoided by some, it should be able to, then often be able to avoid. And it just, it, it, it just invites taxes that are frivolous and sort of impervious. And that's the source of the corruption. You get, you get the tax system that we have, which is obsolete and fractured, get that out of play, the corruption's all of itself.
So to be quite honest, I am not familiar with the, uh, American Anti-Corruption Act, but I will give you my definition of corruption. Corruption is anything that stops the voice of the people getting to their representatives. So we have to remove the corrupting influence of money and politics. And that's why I don't take special interest money. I will not have my voice founded by one group or two group or a few groups when I should be here listening to you and listening to your concerns. In the state of Florida, in December of 2014, the South Florida Water Management District wrote rules to make the polluters pay for cleaning up our water. It was a water quality pollution rule. It went to public meeting. After the public meeting, lobbyists from US Sugar came in and effectively rewrote three of those chapters before those rules were finalized. That, to me, is the epitome of corruption. That should never have happened. That should never have been allowed to happen. Yet it happened and it's been documented. So if we want to stop corruption, we stop electing people who allow it to happen.
Yay.
If there's someone who has a phone that's active per se, that keeps either beeping or is getting an email or a text or something, would you please silence that? It sounds like it's over here or something. So you just asked me. Thank you.
So I just looked up the American Anti-Corruption Act. Um, and it stops political bribery, so special interests can use job offers and donations to influence politicians in secret money so people know who's buying political power and fixes our broken elections so that people, not the political establishment, are the ones in control. That's what's, um, here. Um, and I have heard of it before and not entirely unfamiliar with it. And it is put, uh, out by the group Represent Us, who is trying to stop corruption in politics, which I am completely all for. I think our political system is completely broken by corruption, by people who are getting elected to office, um, to help themselves, making laws that help themselves or help their friends make money. I think we see that all the time. Um, or just to stay in power for longer. And they accept money from, um, special interests or money from dark sources, um, that comes to them that we can't see. And then they're working for people other than the people who elected them. And that is something that we have to fix in America if we want our democracy to continue. Thank you.
Um, the, the base definition of corruption, I think that's the first part of your question, is actually giving something of value or getting something in value and giving something of commensurate value in return. Essentially, that's, that's, that's the corrupt act. Uh, that you're getting something that the public, um, isn't purring to, and then you pass that on in some, in a way, shape or form.
and then you pass that on in some way, shape, or form to subvert the public generally speaking. Just got a chance to purview the Anti-Corruption Act. There's actually three sections of it. One of the subsections, I think it's subsection two, the Florida legislature actually already passed. There's a two-year lobbying ban for members of the legislature. So currently, under Florida law, if you're in the legislature, you cannot directly leave the legislature and go to lobby. One of the amendments, one of the amendments on the current, on the constitutional forward from the Constitutional Revision Commission would actually extend the lobbying ban for elected officials from two years to six years. That's something I totally support. It does not make sense for an elected official to basically be in the body, be a major politic, policy chairman in our legislature, and then, just like that, turn around and go start lobbying. Because yes, you have an inside hand. You know the process. You know exactly how it works. Now, if you leave the process, the way our current structure allows us to, and then you come back and then you go lobby, well, then that means because then you obviously are of some value to whatever principal or company decides to hire you for your services. So essentially, that's what it does. It talks about ending gerrymandering. It talks about that lobbyists can't provide contributions directly to politicians. Those are all the things in it. To be frank, I'm not going to support anything without thoroughly reading it. But some of the basic tenants, I completely understand some of the basic tenants. Yes, obviously, can be supported. And in Florida, how we've already supported some of those tendencies right now by making sure members cannot directly leave the chamber and go start lobbying.
So I agree with Representative Donalds in the definition of corruption. And I was looking at the bullet points. Bullet points sound good, but you have to read an act in order to completely agree with it. The issue that we have now is that elections are bought. Luckily, in my lifetime, in my district, we are showing people and we're proving to people that a seat isn't up for sale. And it doesn't matter how much money you have. It just matters if you're willing to go and talk to the voters and let them know your vision of what you want to do for them, and it works. But we need to start working on that education of our future, and we need to start educating everybody now. The problem is, is we need to make sure that people understand that it's not, the only person running is not the only person that's on TV. There's other people running. And just because they don't have the money to go on TV or send you tons of mailers and remind you to go vote, doesn't mean that they're not running, and it doesn't mean that your voice is in favor. So we need to start educating our children. I mean, we need to start educating the whole state and the whole country in the fact that learn what's going on, figure out, research. You're smart enough to find out who's running and to decide who to vote for. And it's when we put people in office that are asking for your vote, that show up to answer your questions face to face, those are the ones you give a moment to. Those are the ones you give a second thought to, and those are the ones that you should give your vote to. Thank you.
It's always hard to be last and find something creative to say. No, it was just for Congressman State, right? Yeah, so, all right, I filled some time there. To me, corruption is not, corruption is not doing what you were supposed to do. It's being bought. And we know that politicians can be bought because there even is a price tag. The Koch brothers say they can buy a congressperson for $1 to $2 million. Yeah, interesting. There are more lobbyists in Tallahassee than there are elected officials. You know, over a thousand people lobby. They take them to dinner. There's trips. I hear. There's no free dinner. There's no free donation from a special interest that protects you from being corrupted down the road. You know, you have to go and you have to stand for what you stood for when you were running for election. And I want to stand for representing the people that are in my district, and there's just no other way of doing it.
So this question is actually for all. So if you feel comfortable, of course, answer any.
Thank you. This is a great question. I really want to say thank you to everyone that is here because for my campaign, it's a grassroots effort. It wasn't a campaign that was bought. It wasn't a campaign that was throwing money to be able to be their puppet. No. It was an effort from the people who continually heard our message, who heard the message of everyone apart of my team that said, you know what, we're going to contribute to you. We're going to support and push you and keep giving you support to continue. And I want to tell you thank you, and I owe it to you to be somebody of integrity. And I think as county commissioners, we owe it to everyone that supports us to be sure and be able to be transparent in who is funding us and who is helping us. So I want to tell you thank you because it's you who gave me an opportunity. So thank you.
When I was on the city council, I became very involved with the city dog issues. And one of the great advocates that helped us, Jack Lee Dwight Brock, came in and did a performance audit of the city government at my request. We also brought in the head of the Republican Party, who, yes, the executive head, Mike Carr, who is now a judge. And we know Mike Carr because of Stadium Naples. And so I never forgot it. And when I came, when I was running four years ago, I had lunch with Mike Carr, who was just lamenting how the county had gutted the ethics ordinance. And so one of the first things I did is I got, because who is going to vote against making an ethics ordinance stronger? You're out of your mind if you're going to do that. And so that's what I did. I brought it back. But I didn't bring it back with the commission I was elected to. I brought it back with the new commission. What happens in what is corruption is when you forget who you represent. You forget who, who is the important person. When it becomes you, when it becomes your picture, when it becomes your voice. And you must never forget that you are a servant of the public, and that's what it's about. As long as you keep that in front of you and understand every day when you look in the mirror, you are a servant, then you will not go wrong. Thank you.
May I quote you to my students, Mr. Holden? May I quote you to my students? I really do. So actually, this question is from the audience, and it's directed to Ms. Taylor and Mr.?
Ben Doer.
I'm so sorry. I've been going since five this morning. I apologize. Okay. Callier county is at risk of becoming Bay County West. Is there any way to stop overbuilding and density?
Is it 03? That's what they're pushing for right now. We're faced with the rural lands. We're looking at the plans, we're talking about the Golden Gate Master Plan, the rural lands, rural lands west specifically. But the whole idea of where the farmlands are, we're looking at their master plans again. And the urban planners come to you and say, ah, there's four units an acre, but if we make it seven, we get transit. As if you give a developer seven units an acre and suddenly there's a bus coming to their development. It doesn't work like that. So there's a lot of games being played. And so what do you do? We need to hear from you. You need to keep track of when we discuss this. You need to come. We had a budget meeting where we had 120 speakers against the storm water. It was unanimous. We didn't go forward with it. You will make a difference, but if we don't hear from you, it's not going to happen. Because there are three votes right now to move things ahead with greater density. And that's my counting and listening to the remarks. So we need to hear from you. You need to make your voice heard, and you need to come to these meetings. Not all of them. Call my office. I'll tell you which ones to show up.
I think with density, and you're thinking about population, you're thinking about being able to have housing. And this is something that is a very big topic. It's something that we really need to hear from the community to know what is the best route that gives the community and gives everyone in Carter County an opportunity to have a win-win. And when we leave it only up to the commissioners, it might swing away that isn't in the best interest of our residents. So again, I believe this is an opportunity for the residents to have their voice heard, to be a part of those meetings, to have their suggestions come up and give a chance to be heard so that the commissioners can make a best decision that, long term, empowers and gives everybody a win-win. So thank you.
So this question is about immigration. So I'm assuming you need to hear from our congressional candidates and if, well, if you, if our legislative candidates want to respond, you're one of them. What is your position on the expiration of temporary protected status? And it says for Haitians, but I believe this should be beyond that. It should not just be specific to Haitians.
But right now, it's the Haitians.
Right now, it is Haitians. And what is your position on DACA?
My position on all those things is always going to be the humanist position. I'm not going to send, rip somebody out of their home, come to know and love, and send them off to some country they don't know anything about. I'm not familiar with the wording of these two issues. I don't really care. If someone, I'm just not going to throw anyone to the curb. If someone is living here, they're working here, they're a productive part of the community, then they stay here.
Yay, that's.
One of the first bills I will cosponsor as a member of the House is the Clean Dream Act. We made a promise to these young people under DACA that if they played by the rules and did the right thing, we would support them and give them a path to citizenship, and we are going to keep that promise. I've had the privilege over the course of this campaign to spend a lot of time in the Haitian community. Have a chance to visit Haitian churches. I have spent time in Haiti on a medical mission several years ago. And those programs, the TPS programs, and it's not just Haiti. There are several other countries that are at risk of having those programs overthrown because of one man's whim. And it's simply unacceptable. Right now, the Democrats have no seat at the table in Washington. None. So again, nothing changes if nothing changes. If you want to see different policies, you have to elect different policymakers, which means you have to vote. And I know the people in this room will if they haven't already, but you also have to tell your friends to vote. You've got to, you know, it is time to get out in the streets and make a difference. Because if we don't, if the Republicans control Congress and the White House come January, then you can be sure that the temporary stay that we're seeing in the TPS decision will be overturned and thousands of people who are vibrant, vital parts of our community will be sent away. Families will be ripped apart. Businesses will be destroyed. Communities will be severed. We simply can't permit that. That's not the American way, and that's certainly not the America that I want to live in.
Well, we have a few more questions left, but I was told to.
Can I have 30 seconds?
Yeah, well, you didn't use the lawyer, did you? You didn't use our attorney.
When we're talking about packing people up and sending them away, you might note that we're at the highest level of unemployment. The lowest level of unemployment in 30 years. We don't have enough hands to do all the work that needs to be done in this country. We need to be bringing people in, not sending people off, wherever they get sent.
So this question is for Representative Donalds and then Dr. Fodder, if you would like to respond as well. Mr. Donalds, you were raised by a single mother. What have you done to help families with single mothers and fathers to voters?
Yes, that's a pretty extensive question. I was from Brooklyn, New York. I think I gave a piece of an answer when I was describing what was going on in Berkeley. So for people who don't know my full story, let me explain it to you in the course of the answer. So when I was six years old, I was one of those kids they wanted to put on Ritalin. That was me. I was the kid in class that talked too much, that called out all the answers, who finished his work first, who was constantly bored. That was me. The school I went to, Pope School 235 in Brooklyn, New York, across the street from Kingstown Hospital, the hospital I was born in, so they wanted to put me on Ritalin so I would calm down. My mother said, no, absolutely not. You're not going to do that to my child. And she pulled me out of that school, and she put me in a small black private school in Brownstone in Bedford-Stuyvesant, New York. And she paid for it out of her pocket because she believed in herself. And she believed that I was more than just some kid who couldn't sit still. And so when I'm asked what are the things that I'm doing for single mothers or single fathers, it is trying to give them every opportunity to have purchasing power and the education of their child the way my mother had to sprint and sacrifice for, and not just her, my grandmother as well. Because when she was short, my grandmother is the one who stepped in the gap. So when I talk about these policies, it's not because I believe in how some people will try to categorize it. It's I don't want to dismantle public schools. It's not that. It's making sure that parents are empowered to make every choice on behalf of their children. I believe in that so wholeheartedly because that's what my mother did for me. And if I have an ability in a limited section, I'm going to make sure that every parent in our state is fully empowered to do the same thing for their child.
That's a very compelling story. I'm glad I know it now. I have a different story. I grew up in Dalton, Georgia, to parents who, my dad was a truck driver. My mom worked various jobs. Sometimes was at home. Sometimes was a daycare provider, did different things. When I was 12, my parents got a divorce. My dad had some substance abuse problems and basically disappeared from our lives. And after that, life was a struggle. We were on food stamps for a while and had to make hard choices in life. So I appreciate what it is like to struggle. And because of that, I think that making sure that single mothers have more access to healthcare for their children is very important. So I think that expanding Medicaid in the state is something that will help single mothers and lots of other people as well. I think making sure that there's affordable housing, particularly for single mothers, is very important. Every year, the legislature sweeps millions of dollars away from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is supposed to be for providing money toward various different agencies throughout the state to help with housing issues that people face. So making sure that that Affordable Housing Trust Fund is actually spent for affordable housing is something that will help single mothers. I think higher wages in the state is something that should be addressed as well. So that would be helpful. When we're talking about minimum wage jobs, of course, not every single mom is working the minimum wage job. Every dime helps if you're in that situation. And just making sure for every parent in the state that our kids are safe at school is very important. So I support universal background checks and common sense, good legislation. And so I think there's a lot that can be done to make sure that single mothers have a better chance and their kids do too. Thanks.
I was told we have to ask one more question. Is that, is that people there? We could be here all night. I wish my students were here, actually. I wish my students were here, actually. Oh, 24. I used to work for the legislature when I was a young master's student. Okay. This is several questions.
Yes.
These are several questions. Oh my goodness, I may have to get my glasses out for this one. No, no, I'm the moderator. You asked me to do this. So this is for Ms. Kareem. And if Ms. Pasidomo was here, should we have to respond as well? Any questions on this subject? Over 150 complaints, but not one disciplinary action. Why?
On guardianship and the Yes, I wrote it, just so I could clarify. I apologize.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Over 150 complaints, but not one disciplinary action. Why? On probate guardianship. Second question. Expensive, useless documentation now necessary to protect yourself from a stranger being involved in your attack in case of incapacity. Why? Do you support Mayor Barnett's proclaiming October 2018 Professional Guardianship Month? They're all for you. Okay, so I'll do number one first, if that's already going to be. 150 complaints on probate guardianship. Is it okay if I just look at the question?
And maybe, if you don't mind, moderator, I could clarify. They've been, in a year and a half, Kathleen Pasidomo opened up this guardianship reform office. And in a year and a half, there's been 200 complaints made about 500 professional guardians. And that one guardian has been reprimanded. And taxpayers were paying a million dollars for this office. My question is to you, Ms. Kareem, and of course, to Ms. Pasidomo, who isn't here. Don't you think there's a problem? That there are so many complaints, and no one's been reprimanded for what they're doing to our elderly? And secondly, Mayor Bill Barnett has proclaimed every October, each year, October of each year, to be Professional Guardianship Month in Collier County. Meaning, he is giving accolades to professional guardians who are taking care of our elderly, and are mentally and physically disabled. But in the same sense, they are not always on the money. Do you think it's a good thing we're making this proclamation as it being the Guardianship Month, October?
Okay, so I'm going to address, in general, what I think about guardianship, and I'll try to address some of your points.
Thank you.
Okay, so in general, your voice should count in government, whether it's a complaint, or whether it's an accolade, whether you like the way it's moving, or whether you think that things can be done better. I don't know that much about the guardianship program. What I do know is that there are people who are having a lot of trouble in the guardianship program with actually protecting members of their family. Because once members of their family are kind of swept up into this whirlwind of the guardianship program, they have very little contact with them, and they're unable to actually see if the members of their family are being protected adequately. And so I have heard from people that have been through this program and have been devastated. Their lives have been devastated, as have their family's lives. And so certainly, when I get elected, this is one of the things that I will definitely look into. Because if it's hurting a portion of my community, I should not only look into it, but do something about it. In terms of Mayor Barnett's proclaiming October 2018 Professional Guardianship Month, you know, I honestly, I don't have an opinion on that. I'm not saying that all guardianship cases in this town are handled properly, but I know that there are some families who get satisfaction. I suspect this is a move on Mayor Barnett's part to throw out a proclamation. If you go to any county commission meeting, or any city council meeting, there are proclamations almost every month, almost every week. There's a week for this, a week for that. And really, the way that happens is that an organization goes to the county commission or the city council, they meet with staff, and they say, hey, can we do this? And oftentimes, the answer is yes. So in terms of that, I don't have an opinion on that. I don't know how it came about. My assumption is it wasn't his idea. Someone probably approached him and said, hey, can we have a Guardianship Month? And guardianship sounds like a great idea, so why not make it a proclamation? And I'm saving stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. So I appreciate your time tonight. I appreciate all the inmates being here with us as well. Thank you. In conclusion, I'm Cynthia O'Leary, and I'd like to thank Dr. Pravalka for hosting tonight. We'd like to thank the candidates. Thank you, Dr. Pravalka. We'd like to also thank the candidates for taking time to share their views, and the audience. And the audience for attending.
Who else do I want to say?
The only thing better than information is
Give Anita Karina a little rundown of guardianship. Say that again? Give Anita Karina a little rundown of guardianship. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. How are you? Because you have something to do with EMS, don't you?
Always, yes.
Okay, when is a good time for you?
You're going to call Sherry, my assistant, and she'll set something up.
Okay, and my name's Hillary Hope, and she'll set something up. All right, thank you so much. You have a really nice daughter. Oh, I'm so tired. I apologize.
I'm fine on it.
See you later.
How are you doing, Amy?
Good.
That was a long one, huh?
It was. Thank you so much. We'll see you later. Good luck to you. Take care. Bye, sweetheart.